Same question to you, Oliver Tatum.
I do think that our rural voters are well represented on the county commission. And as a rural county resident myself, they will continue to have a fierce advocate on the board. I also want to point out that many of the issues that we are experiencing as rural voters are affected by what's happening in the city. And I also want to make sure that folks understand that representing our farmers and ranchers means protecting their land from the encroachment of our cities. I support the city's efforts to address our need for housing. I want to be a constructive partner, but I also want to make sure that we are keeping that growth within the boundaries of our cities so that we can preserve what makes our rural county special.
Okay, very good. Patty Adair, question to you.
Adequate representation for the farmers and ranchers. Well, as I would say, I'm a bit of a rancher, so, and I drive through, coming from Sisters to Bend on a daily basis. I see what's happening. I see when people's hay is getting rained on. I see when, you know, we've got a lot of snow on the ground. I feel that I try to represent equally. With, when the fact that you have 208,000 different voters, it does always make, it makes for challenging times. We have over 3,055 square miles in Deschutes County, and it happens that 79% of that land is owned by the federal or state government. So, we really don't have as much land in Deschutes County, and I really do want to respect the people that are out there earning a living with their farming, with their ranching. It's a challenging time in Deschutes County. We have the second shortest growing season of the state next to Willamette. So, it's challenging, but I feel like the representation is important. That rural-urban divide, though, it does need to be addressed. So many times, I fought for money to come here, and it went to Portland.
Okay. Morgan Schmidt.
That's a great question, Lee. I think that the structure of our governance with the county commission allows for good representation of our rural voters. I'm not sure that the current commission is a great representation of their values or their priorities, however, especially with the most recent land use decision regarding Eden Properties, the 710-acre piece of property up west of Terrebonne that's larger than Smith Rock State Park. Over 200 people who are locals spoke out against letting that land be redeveloped into 71 10-acre estates. And unfortunately, the two incumbent commissioners sitting at this desk with me decided to allow that development to proceed anyway. And I've been speaking with many of our farmers and ranchers in the area who are deeply disappointed and feel very betrayed by that decision. So regardless of where we live, the responsibility of the commission is to listen and to respect the will of the voters, whether they're urban or rural.
Would anyone like Patty Adair would like 30 extra seconds on this?
Thank you so much. Yes, that 710 acres is actually a rocky soils piece of land, and honestly, it needs to be utilized by a property owner. You have rights when you have a piece of property, and I feel that not everyone wants to live on a 4,000-square-foot lot in Redmond or in Bend. And so therefore, some people that are going to want to live on these 10 acres are going to be, they're going to be tax-paying citizens or contribute to the economy of Deschutes County. We need all housing, not just in the city.
Okay. Morgan wanted to go 30, then we'll get to you, Toni.
We have plenty of large parcels where people can live and have that rural experience at their home. What we don't have are endless supplies of water, endless land that is available for our wildlife, or endless land that's available for our ranchers and farmers. When we do this sort of development, it makes it much more expensive for people who make central Oregon go and who grow central Oregon to actually survive. And we need to respect these people who grow our food and take care of our communities, and they're asking us to protect these lands.
Okay, very good. Toni Debone raised his hand.
Once again, I would advocate for opening up the statewide land use system and just taking a look at it. So, the state of Oregon Department of State Lands used soil analysis to justify a rezone on the east side of Bend. That set the path for other private property owners to say, hey, what about me? I've got some land. It's never been farmed. It doesn't have agricultural water. We're taxing them for not being able to develop it. And so they followed the same path that the state of Oregon started on the east side of Bend. So I'm just pointing out that legally, we shouldn't be thinking, you know, it's just our opinions. We have a system, and it's a box that we need to respect.
All right. Oliver Tatum raised his hand.
Commissioner Debone keeps referring to the Oregon State Land Use System and wanting to open the book. But I want to point out that, as Commissioner Debone pointed out in his opening statement, that has been with us for 50 years. It was the legacy of Governor McCall, a Republican, who knew that if we didn't take steps to protect our rural lands from the encroachment of development, we would lose them. And if we hadn't taken those steps 50 years ago, we wouldn't have that land today, and the Deschutes Basin would look much more like the Los Angeles Basin.
All right. Very good. Time now for our next question. It's been a challenging, I don't think anyone will disagree with this, it's been a challenging two to three years. What letter grade would you give the county's COVID-19 response and why? Oliver Tatum, you get to start this one.
So I want to make a distinction here between the county staff's response and the county commissioners' response. The Board of Commissioners, as our public health authority, I think, I want to be fair, and I want to give them a C. But our staff at the county, I would give an A, because I know they rose above and beyond. I even had the opportunity at one point during an outbreak in one of our memory care facilities, I went and, along with our former psychiatrist, Will Berry, helped swab some patients and found out that there were quite a few that were positive at the time. I saw so many of our staff members really stretched to respond to the needs of our community, and meanwhile, their leadership dismissed the risk and continues to do that today.
Okay. Patty Adair, you get the same question now.
Okay. Could you repeat the question? It was about a COVID grade for the county commissioners?
Well, what letter grade would you give the county's COVID-19 response and why?
I think that if you look at the numbers for Deschutes County, we actually came out really pretty well on the top. At moments in time, we had a lot of cases here. It seemed like at some times, it would probably 50% of the people, at least in Deschutes County, had COVID. We set up the mass vaccination clinic at the fairgrounds, and originally, I even gave a friend yards and yards of fabric to make cloth masks. But of course, cloth masks, as you are very well aware of today, if you can smell smoke through them, they don't really work. So it was truly, it was a very challenging situation. We shut down the government. I actually drove the plan to get our businesses back into opening with the governor. I drove it to Salem. I really, I was so worried. And now looking at our kids and what's happened to our kids, how far behind Oregon kids are, it was so hard. We didn't know. It was definitely a unique situation in the history of our country.
All right. Clarification on this question. Which letter grade would you give it, Patty?
Oh, I'd say a B+ because Deschutes County actually did okay.
Very good. Morgan Schmidt, one minute.
I would like to do the same as Oliver did and sort of differentiate between the response of our county public health staff and the response of our county commissioners. I think the public health did an incredible job under extraordinary circumstances to make sure that our community had as good of access as we could have to testing and vaccines and really getting solid information out there. I was very disappointed in Commissioner Adair and Commissioner Debone's response to the pandemic. However, as leaders, I think it's really important for us to speak with informed statements from health professionals when we're giving advice to the public. And I know that Pandemic Partners was charged with offering accurate advice about COVID. And at one point, we were the most, one of the most visited websites in Deschutes County for accurate COVID information. That shouldn't be left to a Facebook group run by a pastor. That should come from the top, and we didn't get that leadership from these county commissioners, particularly my opponent, who recommended ivermectin at one point.
Thank you very much. Toni Debone.
So, Deschutes County gets an A for this, and it's interesting because it's a very political issue. It's incident management and emergency response that we were asked to go from 0 to 100 miles an hour for a worldwide pandemic. It came on quick. We set up high-throughput vaccine clinics at the fairgrounds. We were serving eastern Oregon counties as well as Deschutes County residents, and we were able to really spin up. Then there's layers. You know, the governor led with fear. You know, shutdown, lockdown, stop things. There was a lot of opinions. Rights were being trampled upon. We were right in the middle of all that. So yeah, there's critiques all over the place, but I know I'm very proud of all the choices we made, the information we shared, the facts that we learned real time during our board meetings. So I've got nothing to apologize about, and I'm very proud of the county staff that took care of business when we needed to respond to this pandemic.
All right. Thank you, sir. Oliver Tatum raised his hand.
I believe Commissioner Adair did as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Patty. Did you go first then?
I guess so. Thank you. Thank you, Oliver. Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge that ivermectin actually won the Nobel Peace Prize in 2015. It's not just a horse warmer. Truly, it is an efficient drug that was acknowledged by the Nobel Committee. So I think that's really important. I always ask questions. I am someone who does my research. I believe in following Johns Hopkins. There's a lot of information out there. Unfortunately, I believe that on some levels, it was politicized, and we had to ask the right questions. But Deschutes County did come out of it pretty darn good. So thank you to our staff.
Thank you. All right. Okay, I saw Oliver Tatum raise his hand.
Yeah, I think it is unfortunate that the response to the pandemic did become so politicized. The enemy is the virus and not each other, and unfortunately, we devolved into yet another culture war issue. And that continues today. We no longer need to be afraid of COVID in the sense that we're not going to overwhelm our hospitals, but we need to take it responsibly. And I was so disappointed back in June when I saw Commissioners Debone and Adair dismiss the ongoing risk of COVID and laugh at the idea that anyone was dying because I had just been to a funeral for a 26-year-old who had died of a blood clot following a COVID infection.
All right. Morgan Schmidt.
I'm not very interested in seven-year-old awards for a drug that no doubt was developed for good purpose when that was not recommended by medical experts during this particular public health emergency. And I'm not interested in leaders who do their own research who don't have any medical training. As Oliver said, our commissioners at this desk treated this issue very lightly, as if it was the common flu, and many of us lost people. I know that I lost my father as a result of the COVID pandemic, and I think we need to treat things seriously and give the public the information they need, no matter how it's being politicized, because we're the leaders you need.
Thank you very much, Morgan. By the way, Morgan, I didn't hear your letter grade on that one.
A for the county public health department. I think our county commissioners failed us.
All right, okay. Toni, you want 30 extra seconds? Everybody else did. Okay, all right, then we're going on to our next question then. Deschutes County, starting its 20-year land use planning update. What's the number-one thing you think the state could do better to make such planning succeed? Patty Adair, you start this one.
To make the planning succeed?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the state, okay, yes, the state of Oregon. Well, it would be nice that they would recognize that we have a different set of issues over on this side of the mountain. We clearly do. We have our, you know, we have less rain, we have a lot of junipers in Deschutes County, which I worry about, but I see that it's always a conflict. And then we have our fire season. So what is the state doing about it? I was raised in Hepner. We had the Kinzu Mill running, and what really makes me sad is seeing our trees burn up. And so somehow, I feel like our state has to do a better job about how do we treat our forests. I actually so appreciated when they took out trees on the way, Sisters. Apparently, ODOT had killed some, and they cleaned it out, and it was so much better for the animals and the trees themselves on this side of the mountain. So it's, the state has a long ways to go, recognizing that we are our own person.
All right. Morgan Schmidt.
When it comes to our comprehensive plan, a lot of that is going to revolve around land use, and it's a big picture of how we want to grow. We can't lose track of the forest for the trees, for instance. We need to focus on a plan, a strategy for how we're going to move forward with the incredible growth that we're experiencing. And I think support from the state looks like having county commissioners that are willing to take some of our central Oregon needs, and my opponent is right, we do have some different needs because of our context here on the east side of the mountains. But we need commissioners that are going to advocate in Salem and build those relationships to get Deschutes County the care that we need when we're planning for our land use in the long term. Two of those things have to do with, one of those things has to do with water, and we need to ask for more flexibility from the state around our water use. We have incredibly antiquated water laws, and I think there's things we can do to advocate for more flexibility to conserve water. And two, I think we can advocate for a special high-desert goal in that land use system that will allow us to make more consistent land use decisions over time when it comes to our soil samples.
Very good. Thank you, Morgan. Toni Debone.
So, a comprehensive plan is a 20-year visionary document. You implement it for 10 years, and then you may update it 10 or 12 years later. So that's what we're talking about here, is the comprehensive plan. Where are we going to see more development possibly in the rural or not? There's some opportunities out there, and it's right back to the same land use system. 50 years later, we've got some parcellized lands that were zoned as resource lands, and I'm referring to Section 36, a square-mile, southern Deschutes County zoned as forest, which people are building on. So we've got people that are out there finding out that they're not allowed to have a dwelling, but then we saw a forest fire burn down a property that didn't have permits. So we've got to open up just that little bit, and I'm not talking about a big sprawl, and I'm not even talking about being able to see much difference across the landscape. If you've ever been at the top of Palina Peak and you look back down at central Oregon, you know, just across any view you can see, you can't even see development out there. It's pretty amazing what we have here. So really, please get engaged, once again, in the process.
Very good. Oliver Tatum.
Yeah, so I'm surprised to find myself say this, but I actually agree with Commissioner Adair that we do need, we need the state to recognize that this side of the mountains is different from the Willamette Valley. And as Morgan has suggested, we have different land use rules acknowledging the differences in the land on our Oregon coast, and we need that here in our high desert as well. I'm also eager to talk to our state legislators and our partners at state agencies to help move forward our innovative pilot projects like the acreage on the east side of Bend and the Skyline Project in Redmond, where we did get granted some special occasions to expand our urban growth boundaries for affordable housing. And those seem to be stalled, and I'm disappointed that our current commissioners have not been more effective in moving those forward.
Very good. Patty Adair would like 30 extra seconds.
It's not that we haven't tried. We are always working on it, having relationships with people such as Senator Johnson. She has been an amazing advocate on some things for it, and then, of course, we've got Senator Finley. We are always working on our relationships, what we can do, and it's so amazing because we actually have the growth of the entire state in Deschutes County. It's been going on for quite a while. The growth is tremendous, and, you know, adapting to that growth and yet being respectful of the beauty and the natural resources we have here, and yes, the water legislation issues in the state needs to be updated for here.
Thank you very much. Okay. Morgan wanted to, or, yes, Morgan, next.
Thanks. That's all right. So with this comprehensive plan update comes a choice for Deschutes County voters. We can decide whether we're going to continue to sort of make land use decisions piecemeal and grow somewhat haphazardly and chaotically, or we can decide that we're going to grow intentionally and do that in a way that preserves and protects our open spaces and our agricultural lands. I want to do a quick moment and say, there's not always this information out there, but check the Deschutes County website. There's open houses coming up the next week for people to weigh in about how they hope Deschutes County will grow, and it's important to have your voice involved.
All right, very good. Toni, raise his hand.
So there's going to be some exciting ideas that'll bubble up from a comprehensive plan, and so many times, you know, we have land use advocacy organizations saying, nope, you can't do that, nope, you can't do that. We've got to figure out, as I say, just open up the book and look at some of the chapters, because things have been shaved to such a fine point, litigated to such a level, that the box is tight. And it's good, and I'm not saying it's wrong, but the future means we're going to have some real exciting conversations.
Okay. Oliver, you want 30 extra on this?
Sure. I'll just point out that I do recall at a public event Commissioner Debone bragging about the fact that he had, he and Commissioner Adair had invited a lawsuit from Thousand Friends of Oregon. So they say that there's a box, they say that there's laws, and yet they don't seem to really have high regard for the rules that are set in place.
All right, we're moving on to our next question, and this is a pretty simple one. What county services do you think deserve more attention? Now, not necessarily money, just more attention. Morgan, you start this one off.
Thank you. I think that the first department that comes to mind is our mental health department, our behavioral health department. We know that, especially in the wake of the COVID pandemic, we're seeing mental illness in our community rise at an alarming rate. Oregon leads the country in many ways in mental illness and in a lack of resources to address it. And so we need to really look at how we're prioritizing behavioral health at the county. The stabilization center has been a great addition. We need to make sure that we have long-term funding for that. I think we need to continue advocating at the state and federal level for more funds to invest there. I really want to see our mobile crisis assessment team expanded so that they can be first responders when someone's having a mental health crisis, and we can let our sheriff's office and our police officers do what they're trained best to do, free them up to do that. I also want to see more investment in our healthy schools partnership that is making a real difference for students in the Ben Lepine Schools, but I think we can go beyond that and do even more.
Very good. Okay. Toni Debone.
Well, this can be a fun question. So I'm just going to go down some different departments here. So we have our 911 Public Safety Answering Point, which supports all the public safety services here. When you call 911, we've got the floor that does that. They do a great job. We're understaffed there, so if anybody wants to get a good job in 911, please give us a call. Also, the health department, you know, every year, we talk about the services of the health department. Different things are coming and going, but we always have open positions there also. Community Development does a great job here at Deschutes County. You know, when somebody comes in for a permit, we go through ups and downs, and we're talking about the comprehensive plan. So let's acknowledge the great work that all the staff does there. And there's this other department, the road department, where they really kick butt out there. You know, plowing the snow in the winter, paving and maintenance in the summertime. You know, I hope people appreciate the good roads that we do have here. And then solid waste, in the last 10 seconds here, I'm going to talk about, we're going to recite a solid waste facility. Just think about it, you know, somebody picks up the trash, it goes somewhere, magic happens for $15 a month or whatever the number is, and we're going to have to recite a landfill. Let's all work together on that.
All right. Oliver Tatum.
I think one department that really deserves more attention is our Natural Resources Department, which consists of our county forester and our fire-adapted communities coordinator. And I have gotten to know this department well because I serve on the Deschutes County Project Wildfire Steering Committee, and also with my neighbors in my rural neighborhood of Sundance, did work to organize and apply, become a fire-wise community so that we could apply for a county grant. And so, working with our fire-adapted communities coordinator, saw the important work that they were doing. And they were stretched then at the time, and then unfortunately, we lost both our county forester and our fire-adapted communities coordinator. We need to rebuild that department, and we need to consider expanding it so that we can really do more to protect our communities by reducing flammable fuels and reducing the risk of wildfire. Something that's important to me, having experienced that loss as a child.
Okay, all right. Patty Adair.
Thank you for this question. You can tell we have so much need with so much growth, and one of the things I really think we in Deschutes County need to recognize is that we have almost 16,000 veterans. Our veterans' office is now open five days a week, but hearing the numbers that the number of suicides by veterans in our nation has doubled up to 44 a day, I believe that we need to work our veterans' department with our mental health department and reach out as much as we possibly can. I'm working on a bunkhouse in Lepine for veterans down there with a community kitchen. The Veterans Village here in Bend is incredibly successful. We've had six graduates, but veterans, they've already given to us, and I believe that it's time that we really need to nurture them and do more than we can. So with the health department stepping up with behavioral health, our stabilization is, center has actually treated over 2,300 unique individuals to date. It's doing a job, but we've got to really put a handle around our veterans.
Good. Thank you, Patty. Morgan, did you raise your hand?
I'm just noting that there's a lot of support said verbally out loud about mental health care and veterans' care, and at the same time, we already talked about it, but psilocybin is back on your ballot, and that comes from this extreme ideology that says it's somehow an illicit substance or something that's going to lead our community awry, when in fact, it's a resource and it's a possibility of hope for our veteran community. And so anyone who says they support our veterans, I think has a responsibility to support this important tool in our behavioral health toolbox.
All right. Toni, did I see a hand up? All right. Anybody else? Patty.
I would like to respond to that because the Oregon psychiatrist actually came out against Measure 109. I think that's really important to identify that. And the other thing, it will be in Bend. Being in Bend and near medical, I feel that that's a very important part of it. So, you know what? We didn't say no to it. It can be in Bend, it's going to be in Sisters, but really, it needs to be near medical, and OHA, I am hoping, will get their act together and get us an answer.
All right. Oliver Tatum, you have the opportunity. Nope, turned down. Okay. It's been a great hour so far, huh? What do you think? That's all the time we have for the questions. Now, we get to let each of you give a closing remark, and we begin with Oliver Tatum.
I mentioned that I grew up in Deschutes County, and boy, has it changed since I was a kid. I remember when the mills closed, and we had to go through that painful period of transition from an economy based on timber to an economy based on construction and tourism. And then I also recall the bubble bursting in 2007, 2008, and we went through another painful period. But we came through on the other side and built an economy that's much more diverse and robust and attracting people from all over the country. Unfortunately, we have elected too many people that prioritize profits over people and didn't make the necessary investments in our social infrastructure, our housing, our childcare, and now we're facing a new period of challenging transition. Commissioner Debone, my opponent, is a good man. I admire his public service, but he has been in this office for 12 years. He is running for a fourth term, and every year, every election, he campaigns, as he mentioned tonight, on responsible, managed growth. And so I have to ask, does the growth that we've experienced feel like it's been well-managed? I think we can do better, and I trust you, the voters of Deschutes County, to recognize that it is time for a change, and I hope to earn your vote when you receive your ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Oliver Tatum. Patty Adair, closing remarks.
Oh, but I went first. Don't I go last now?
We're just going in rotating order.
Oh, okay, all right. I thought I would get to go last. Thank you so much. Okay. Every day, I act as an advocate for each and every person in Deschutes County. I've built a lot of strong and meaningful relationships throughout my four years of service. I have a unique combination by being a CPA, saving a half a million dollars on the stabilization center before it opened. Critically, that was your money. It wasn't, it might have been a little bit of mine, but it was definitely your money. I feel that with my expertise in watching the bottom line, that's something that you're not going to find anywhere else in my opponent. It's really important. Costs are going up. We're building capital structures, the courthouse, the latest bid on the courthouse went up 48%, eight months earlier. So, you know, you see that the numbers are changing. Our economy is slowing down currently, and what do we do with our growth? We've really tried to balance it. I feel that supporting our law enforcement, our affordable housing, we've done a lot of affordable housing the last four years. And who would have known that the COVID would actually expand housing needs here in Deschutes County more than take it away? It was definitely not what we in the county expected when we were, when we were planning that year's budget in May of 2020. It's been my honor to serve you. I appreciate it, and I look forward to serving you again the next four years. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Patty. Morgan, you have 90 seconds for closing remarks.
The next 10 years are going to make or break Deschutes County. Under my opponent, we will continue to go down a path that is adverse to science and the wisdom of experts, that is anti-choice and rips away personal freedoms, that makes land use decisions lead to more rural subdivisions and sprawl across our beloved open spaces, leading to more traffic and higher emissions, and is fiscally short-sighted. I don't know any CPA who would recommend to a business that they take in less money while voting to spend more, and that's what's happened under her watch. With me, Deschutes County will get a leader with vision, an independent leader, and a strong leader. I believe that we can be a place where our workforce can afford to buy and rent in livable cities near open spaces that we all love, where unsanctioned camping can be a thing of the past because we've put dignified shelter options in place, where we can lead based on evidence and not ideology, and where everybody knows exactly who to call when they're having a mental health crisis, and they know that help will arrive either for them or a loved one or a neighbor. And we can be a county where we invest taxpayer money wisely for the future and handle our growth intentionally so that everyone who lives here can actually flourish here. Look, Deschutes County already has a finance department full of CPAs. What we don't have is a leader in position three. If you give a schmidt about the future of Deschutes County, please vote for me in November. I'd be honored to have your vote.